Uh, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May twenty-fourth uh, column, meeting of the Collinswood Board of Ed. This meeting has been appropriately advertised. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Chu.
Yep.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Mello.
Here.
Mrs. Everino.
Here.
Ms. Celia.
Here.
Mr. Stotts.
Here.
Mrs. Wood.
Here.
Mrs. Kayden.
Here.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no executive session at this time, uh, but we are, before we go into Committee of the Whole, we are going to uh, give our student board reps the chance um, to speak earlier in the meeting, knowing they most likely are very busy at this time of year and have um, lots to do. So if the student board reps, we, we know we saw a few of you on the call. If you can um, unmute yourself and give the, the board reports right now, that would be great.
No problem. Hi, it's Asia. Um, I'm going to be doing academics. So right now is going to, that's, we are all finished, I'm pretty sure with our AP tests. We're long, kind of, but we made the best of our situation. Um, another thing is, which is, I can congratulate them. And TV senior Ava, she won an award at the Rowan University uh, Media Festival for her film Chasing Calvin. Um, Ava, Madrietta, um, Fiona, Henry, eh, me, I'm sorry, Fiona Basowitz and uh, Tyler Colleki there. All of their films were nominated, as well as Josiah, Josiah Anger actually won at the Emmy Awards this year. Um, computer science students, um, Micah Anger, Jer- uh, Jeremy Hayden. They took second place at the Lockheed Martin uh, competition this past weekend, which is really cool. And right now, we, I think this week we had the senior awards on Wednesday. It might, it may be moved because of the weather, but that's something else to look forward to.
Okay, so for extracurricular activities, sophomore Amalia Mezak, um, she coordinated the online broadnate, Broadway night that was on um, April sixteenth, which was pretty cool. Um, on April nineteenth, professional actors from Shakespeare and Clark, and Clark Park Theater Company, provided a workshop for our student cast members for the Spring Musical Into the Woods, which, which just ended um, this Saturday, was pretty good. And the Social Justice Club has created a stand for students to get information about the COVID vaccine, um, for those who are twelve and up. And the first sign up, I believe, was last Thursday, and the new information session is tomorrow after school.
We have Nicolette or is it just the two of you today?
I think Nicolette's on the call.
Nicolette, are you on the call and able to give your student report? Okay, we can check back in and see if um, if maybe she jumps on later. We can uh, we can have her give hers. Thank you very much, ladies. You are obviously free to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but also we understand that you have a lot going on, so if you need to hop off the call now, you are welcome to do that as well. In my excitement to uh, hear from the student board reps, I uh, jumped over the Pledge of Allegiance, so my apologies for that. We're gonna have to back up and do that before we do Committee of the Whole. So uh, anyone who would like to stand um, and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please do so. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, we are gonna move on to uh, section three, Committee of the Whole. Do I have a motion to go into Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have two things on our Committee of the Whole um, agenda for this evening. Um, and I think Dr. McDow- McDowell is gonna lead this discussion with us about um, any school reopening updates for September, as well as end of the year ceremonies, since um, that is upon us.
So, um, good evening, everyone. So in terms of end of the year uh, ceremonies, naturally, the, the largest event is uh, high school graduation, which will be happening on June twenty-fourth. Um, but prior to um, the end, the last day of school on the seventeenth, we will have uh, promotion ceremonies in uh, all of our elementary schools. Um, and each uh, elementary school will be uh, releasing those dates to their school community. We will be sent, we will be putting all of the uh, end of year ceremonies on the district website in one curated location. Uh, so that'll be coming out also this week. Uh, with, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say that, that board members, um, we usually uh, kind of find a way for at least one of us to be at all of those um, fifth grade ceremonies. And I'm glad that um, this year, we'll be able to, to get back at that again. So once we have all of the dates, I'll send something around so we can kind of sign up to make sure where um, we have some representation at, at each of the school um, end of year ceremonies. So be looking for an email from me probably later this week.
Absolutely. Uh, with regards to school reopening, um, currently what's in process is each school site are participating in what we're calling school community conversations, with an emphasis on two strands of planning uh, and recommendations. One, the area of health, safety, uh, and the second, teaching and learning. So schools uh, will be uh, uh, a facilitation guide was developed by the administration, and each school will be engaging in a two-part conversation with uh, recommendations and requests in order for us to have a safe return to school in September. The feedback from each of our schools will go into um, the collective pot and will be uh, serve as the foundation for our school reopening plan that we will be releasing publicly in August. Paired with the school reopening plan, we will also have school-based uh, town halls and Q and A sessions at every school and every campus uh, at the, during the month of August in order to uh, formally present the reopening plan and then answer any and all questions associated with uh, a full-time, in-person learning experience in September. Uh, along the way, there will be continued focus groups and feedback loops uh, in order to make sure that we are making um, appropriate progress and that included within our plan are the right things based on the needs of our school community.
And Dr. McDowell, I know that we are obviously hoping to plan for, for the best-case scenario, meaning um, as you know, uh, the last update said, like, the numbers are starting, uh, really starting to go down, and we're hoping that that continue, that trend continues throughout the summer, and so that distancing um, guidelines will hopefully not be in place. But I, I would assume that the answer to this would be yes, that we will be throughout the summer planning for all of the potential contingencies and what would happen if that there was a spike and we would need to um, to change things up um, because of that and everything. Is that pretty accurate?
That, that is accurate. I, I, I would argue the term "all contingencies." Um, what I would say is that we do envision is, is uh, based on the current trajectory, we are trending to the point that by July, we will not have a social distancing expectation in schools. That's the current trend, provided uh, viral transmission continues to drop. Uh, as a county, we have moved out of high-risk down to substantial. Uh, within the next several weeks, we anticipated moving to moderate. As a region, we have moved to moderate, and we are approaching low transmission as a region. We also, uh, in support of um, of the safe return to school, uh, we will be placing great emphasis on vaccinations. Now that the emergency use authorization has been issued for children twelve and over, uh, we will be working in partnership with Camden County Department of Health as a facilitator to make it easier for families to access that level of resource at our secondary uh, campus, so at the middle and the high school. We currently have put out a survey, uh, we put it out on uh, Friday, uh, and then we sent it also again on Saturday, and then we sent reminders again today, and then we will have reminders tomorrow, as well as Wednesday, uh, to include all of our students ages twelve and over, their families um, who are twelve and over uh, in Collinswood, Oakland, as well as Woodland. Um, we wanna be good neighbors with the understanding is that the, the fastest way for us to get as close to normal as possible uh, is to develop herd immunity within our schools. Um, this same push is taking place among our staff. Uh, at the last interval, um, roughly seventy-five percent of staff in all schools were fully vaccinated. Um, our goal um, is to continue to increase that number, uh, because we wanna make sure that we are all in school, um, but that we're all still safe.
Fiona, do you, do you have your hand raised there, or that might, oh, no. Sorry, that was, that was, that was my thing, not yours. Um, does anybody have anything else they wanted to add to the, the school reopening discussion, or any questions? To Dr. McDowell.
There was one thing I wanted to add or clarify. Um, this doesn't necessarily have to do uh, with the school reopening, but I did wanna add that the Curriculum Committee did discuss the use, uh, the continued use of the SRF funds to help those students who um, need to bridge skills starting in the fall. And I just wanted to share with the rest of the board um, and the community that Dr. McDowell, uh, you shared that summer planning is gonna be devoted to um, developing these plans um, to best fit the needs of each school. So I just wanted to share that with everybody.
I actually have a question that ties to um, the most recent update, and I know this is separate from school reopening in the fall, but um, I'm probably a little bit behind on this. Where are we on how we are going to move forward with the summer programming? As far as social distancing requirements, are we going to um, start where we are now and then adjust as we go? Or are we going to, I know it's gonna be in person, I think that's the main goal. Or are we going to um, continuously reevaluate that as well and, and, and shift that in real time?
So, great question. So, summer programming, um, generally, because it is voluntary, class size are smaller. So, we anticipate, because we have now moved into uh, out of high transmission, um, all of our students and all of our schools um, are uh, in, enabled to be, to be at a three-foot social distancing rate. So with a smaller number of students participating in summer programs, and then the number um, of classrooms that we have at our disposal in the summer, we don't envision that being an issue um, with regards to social distancing. There will also be a combination of whole group and small group um, activities, both indoor and outdoor. So with those combinations, we, we don't envision it being a problem.
Thank you.
For, for parents, um, Dr. McDowell, when will more information about the, the August camps um, be sent out so that parents can, can plan accordingly?
We have an administrative retreat on Wednesday. Um, we will calibrate uh, uh, among all of the schools and secure uh, the date and then the communication that, that will be going out. I would envision that by Friday, in Friday's weekly update, um, we will set that expectation for families um, publicly, and also post uh, the events, as well as some of the key dates on the district website.
Great. Any other board members have, have any questions or anything they'd like to add to, to this part of the, for this? I have standing hands, um, but jump in it as I finish this up, if you want. Um, so this is obviously an ongoing discussion item, um, and there will be uh, more to come as, as we get into the summer and um, the, the meat of what plans uh, for next year will look like, um, will really start to come to fruition. So appreciate the update. Um, at this time, and it, that, those were the only things that we had on uh, on for Committee of the Whole, so uh, can we get a motion to come out of Committee of the Whole?
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to section four, our presentations. Uh, normally, this is the uh, the, the board meeting where we get to move from Zane North to the, the middle school auditorium, and, and we get to see all of the students that uh, that received awards this year. And we have student reps that get to sit with us, and we get to honor all of the um, the teachers of the year. And of course, COVID has um, made that a, a thing that we couldn't do this year. I look forward to doing that again next year. But uh, Dr. McDowell does have a, of course, there's everything else with COVID, had to be different. Um, a, a different way of honoring other, other teachers this year. So, Dr. McDowell, I'm gonna pass it up to you.
Hey. Well, wh- where, where do we begin with uh, the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year? Um, other than to really uh, to drill down and just say, just a debt of gratitude and thanks to our, our educators? How do you identify a single educator, or even a small group of educators, when everyone has really stepped up and gone above and beyond in order to meet the, the very diverse needs of our school community? So one of the things that uh, became very clear to not just administration, but also um, our Board of Education, was how do we, in a very public way, acknowledge the collective efforts of all of our educators? Um, so this year, for twenty-twenty-one, that is coming in the form of a um, uh, an educator uh, of the year proclamation for all staff and their contributions to support the needs of our school community. Uh, and I'll read that at this time. Uh, whereas the Collinswood Public Schools teachers and staff are responsible for shaping the minds and hearts of their students in order to ensure that they all have an equal chance at life through education, and whereas Collinswood Public Schools teachers and staff spend countless hours creating safe and loving school cultures, building deep partnerships with families and communities, collaborating with colleagues and reflecting on their craft, and whereas Collinswood Public Schools teachers and staff go above and beyond the call of duty to fill many roles, such as mentors, role models, coaches and motivators, and whereas Collinswood Public School teachers and staff engage students with exciting and rigorous teaching and learning, as well as numerous creative opportunities to grow both academically, socially and emotionally. And whereas the Collinswood Board of Education recognizes and supports each of its teachers and staff in their commitment to educating the students of Collinswood Public Schools. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Collinswood Board of Education honors our teachers and staff for the devotion they have shown to our families and students during this unprecedented twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year, and declares that each uh, a distinguished staff member of the year, and be it further resolved that the Collinswood Board of Education encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing their deepest gratitude to our teachers and staff for their unwavering commitment to children and families of Collinswood, adopted this twenty-fourth day of May in the year twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. I wish we could go and give each one of uh, our teachers the, the bouquet of flowers and everything else that usually goes along with this, because they have definitely all earned that and plus much, much more um, with, with everything that was uh, thrown at them this year. So a virtual uh, round of applause for, for all of our teachers and staff in Collinswood and open, because it was um, it was quite a year, and it's, we, we almost made it through. Okay, moving on to section uh, five, future dates and miscellaneous information. Just wanted to highlight for everyone, um, the, anyone wants to go to Night Park and watch all of the kids um, that are going to prom on June third. Uh, last day of school is June seventeenth, and graduation is um, June twenty-fourth. Uh, section six is routine for business. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-sixth board meeting?
All moved. Chris?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have made it to our first public comment section. Uh, if you wish to make a statement, please type your name and address into the chat. When your name is called, you can unmute yourself to speak, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss, discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the, the community opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. And there will be opportunities to engage in dialogue with Dr. McDowell and board members um, at other times, such as these um, these community forums that will be happening over the summer. Uh, so if anyone has um, would like to make a public comment, please type your name into the chat now. Not seeing any, but I'm gonna give it twenty more seconds, just in case somebody's. Okay, seeing as there is no public comment at this time, uh, we move on to section eight, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. McDowell?
Um, the enrollment report uh, states for April of twenty-twenty, uh, we had an, an enrollment of twenty-two, thirty-three, and as of uh, April twenty-twenty-one, we have an enrollment of twenty-two, oh-seven. Um, attached in eight-point-zero-two is the school safety drill report. Uh, there, in eight-point-zero-three, there were no suspensions, and point-zero-four, uh, no bullying reports at this time.
Thank you. Um, just really quickly, because we are up on, on section nine, which was the student reports. If Nicolette happens to still be on the call, I don't know if anybody can scroll through and look faster than I can. Uh, I don't think I see her name.
I see her name still, but it looks like she's muted and off.
Okay, Nicolette, if you would like to give um, your, your board, student board member report?
Uh, yes, I would. Just one second, sorry. I'm kinda at work right now, so I just have to step aside and go into another room.
Thank you so much for fitting us in while you're at work, Nicolette.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries at all. Thanks for squeezing us in.
No problem. Um, so I just wanted to say that um, senior Sophie Stidle and Josh Forrest both broke two school records for the two-mile run um, this past weekend at the competition at Cherokee High School. So that's a really big win for them, so go them. Um, and the wrestling team beat Highland thirty-six to thirty-four on Friday in an exciting outdoor match. The team um, ended the season with a ten-to-three record. Michael Gregg wrestled in the state tournament um, on Sunday and finished top sixteen in the state in his weight class. So that's a really like, good thing for him too. So those are the two things I have for the past couple of months for the athletics. Also, I do believe Owen um, Marish also did um, beat a school record for, I think, for the mo- one mile.
Great, thank you very much. And we will let you get back to work. We appreciate your reports.
No problem.
Um, moving on to section ten, our Business Administrator Board Secretary report. Ms. Coleman?
Yes, thank you. Um, so this evening, I've got your April two thousand twenty-one report of monthly budget transfers. Um, in ten-point-o-two, I've got your April two thousand twenty-one uh, Board Secretary and Treasurer's reports, as well as the cash reports, um, and all of your financial statements. Item ten-point-zero-three is your student activities um, report. Ten-point-zero-four is the food service financial statement for the month of April. And ten-point-zero-five is a um, a list of the purchase orders that were issued on your behalf in the month of May. And in ten-point-zero-six is a listing of the warrants to be paid uh, tomorrow morning. And just as a side note, um, the audit has, your annual audit has been scheduled, um, and um, the auditor will be at the first two weeks of August, so I hope to have your audit report early in the fall, um, again this year. And that is it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Uh, moving on to section eleven, our Buildings, Grounds and Finance Committee report by Mr. Craig.
Thank you. Uh, the Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects this district-wide. Uh, tonight, we are seeking approval for um, items eleven-point-one to eleven-two-two, um, twenty-two. So eleven-point-two is approval of all the transfers that were listed in ten-point-one above, and Coleman's report, eleven-three is the Board Secretary's certification that no budgetary line item um, uh, has exceeded the appropriations that we've left out. It's no over expenditures. Eleven, eleven, uh, oh-four. So in the uh, Secretary's Monthly Financial and Treasurer's Monthly Financial Report, uh, no over expenditures were list, were found. Uh, and five, uh, approval of the Secretary and Treasury Reports. Uh, eleven-oh-six, approval of the Student Activities Report. Eleven-seven, approval of Food Service Financial Statement. It's also listed above. Eleven-nine is the purchase orders. Eleven-eight, excuse me, is the purchase orders. Eleven-nine is the warrants. Uh, eleven.
Okay, I hope it helps.
Sorry. Um, eleven-ten, uh, recommendation of the Superintendent for Audubon Public Schools to provide technology services to Collinswood Public Schools uh, from April twenty-first through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. Um, this, I believe, is our former tech person has headed over to Audubon, but his heading is still leaning in a little bit. Is that correct? This is Coleman.
Yes, it's on an as-needed basis, in case um, there's some issues that pop, prop up between now and the end of June.
Yep. Hopefully none. So, keep, there's been enough tech issues for one year, so uh, fingers crossed. Uh, eleven-eleven, um, is the resolution authorizing submission of other capital projects to the NJ DOE. Um, listed in here, uh, this is, this is the um, the HVAC, correct? Yep, so listen to the HVAC uh, approvals using SRF funds, um, and submitting those to the Department of Education for approval. So hopefully hearing back from them soon, so we can get that project rolling and get our HVAC upgrades and utilizing that, those SRF funds. Uh, eleven-twelve is um, approving a contract with Go! Bus Company for athletic transportation at a rate of three hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-one cents to five hundred and three dollars and thirty-seven cents per bus according to mileage, and thirty dollars and fifty-one per bus for each half-hour increment beyond four hours for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Eleven-thirteen, um, is transportation agreement with River Edge School District to transport a special education student from a group home to Essex Valley School en route Q-nine-six-five from May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, to the end of this school year. Uh, cost to the district is a two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollar per diem. Uh, limb fourteen is the approving of Beata Home Healthcare's provider on one-on-one nursing services for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year at a rate of fifty-five dollars per hour for an RN, forty-five per hour for an LPN. Same with Beata He- Home Healthcare, uh, approval of nursing services for transportation purposes for next school year at a rate of seventy-five dollars for an RN, sixty-two for an LPN. Eleven-sixteen, uh, Superintendent has moved to approve the contract with Invo Healthcare Associates to provide physical therapy services for special education students next year at a rate of seventy-nine dollars per hour. Um, eleven-seventeen is tax remittance, approved the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two tax remittance schedule as presented, attached. Eleven-eighteen is a voided check, moving on, recommendation, warrants, payroll and student activities accounts as attached. Eleven-nineteen is a list of some of the camps that are going to be using uh, our facilities and approval to allow them to do so on the following dates. Uh, there's tennis, lacrosse and field hockey all this summer. Uh, eleven-twenty is uh, approval of the borough to use the high school football field for the annual Fourth of July celebration from noon to midnight on the fourth. Uh, eleven-twenty-one is the approval of um, Declan Moody and the Ironman Wrestling Camp to use the high school wrestling room from June twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, from nine to eleven. And then eleven-twenty-two is, we are moving on the recommendations of the superintendents to approve, um, authorizing the submission of a two-thousand-dollar sustainable New Jersey grant application funded by PSENG Foundation on behalf of Zane North Elementary School. Um, so those are all of the, um, those are all the items for, for this committee.
Matt, I'm wondering if we could go a little bit in talk conversation around the grant that we talked about that was being submitted for today, since the other board members weren't, I, I don't think, involved with that conversation?
This is the one that we had the special meeting on Friday?
Yeah.
Is that our, I, I can, either I can give a quick, or if Ms. Coleman, that was um, through uh, a state organization to get money to.
Wait, Matt, hold on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we? Yeah, I was gonna say, can we have a motion and a second and then we, and then we'll do the question. Yeah.
I'll do question.
Point of order. Yeah.
Yeah. So just hang on one second. So first, can we just get a motion to approve items 11.01 to 11.22?
So
And a second.
Second.
Okay, now we can do questions and comments. Sorry, Matt, go ahead.
No worries. Cecilia, yeah, it was a we had to get a sign, it was due today. I'm hoping, Ms. Coleman, that we were able to get that in today.
I can, I can kind of explain it a little bit. The Governor, Governor Murphy released local recreation improvement grants. And we got notice of this grant opportunity to improve some outdoor rec space. After the April meeting, but it was literally due by five o'clock today. So I had to have a special board meeting last Friday to approve a grant because I had to upload a, an approval resolution to the DCA with the grant application. So we've been looking to renovate and repair the high school basketball courts outside, like by the maintenance facility behind the high school. So that is what we have, we put in for, we put in for $217,000. To the, the DCA for the local rec improvement grant and hopefully we get it. Hopefully it's awarded to us. So that way we can fix up the basketball court without it costing the taxpayers anything. It did require a letter from the borough and a letter from the mayor, both of which we did receive in support of the grant. So everything was uploaded and submitted today. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll also say when, this was one of the things that Keith pointed out to me when we were prepping for the ad hoc facility committee and thinking like long-term things. This was one of the projects that was definitely on the list and hopefully something we could do down the road. So fingers crossed we get the, this grant that would, would knock off a pretty big project for us, so.
Matt, I've got a couple of questions if I can. One, and I'm not sure what section 11 shows, but in Mrs. Coleman's report, it indicated that the warrants were going to be paid on 5/17. Which was last week. I'm assuming that is a typo.
I'll let Ms. Coleman answer.
Let me open it up. It might be that was the date probably we printed it. Are you talking to this report here?
Yes.
Yeah, it's probably, it's just a typo. I can correct that. But we, we print it before the finance meeting so that you can look at them, Mr. Stotts. So that was probably the date that everything got printed. So when it was uploaded as the PDF, that was probably the date that it was.
All right, that's fine.
But they are paid the day after the board meeting.
Okay, yeah, I, I realize that. I was just
No, you're correct.
The other thing I have is on the wrestling program. I had a couple of conversations with the, Mrs. Coleman. Email conversations with her. And my question was whether the sexual abuse was covered. The certificate of insurance doesn't show that. And the application that the wrestling program had shows specifically that that's not covered. But Mrs. Coleman tells me she has evidence that that is in fact covered. Is that correct, Bethan?
Yes, I sent, I downloaded the policy that was in the application. It had a link to the wrestling. I forgot the name of the organization, their website that had their insurance. I downloaded the policy and sent it to our insurance broker to have them go through it to make sure that the SAM, which stands for Sexual Abuse and Molestation Coverage, was in the policy itself. I did, I, as I explained in the finance committee, I was going to reach out to them and I did. And they got back to me this morning that it is covered. So I do have an email confirmation from our broker that it is included in their policy.
Okay.
And Bethan, you didn't email all of us to let us know that too.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stotts, is that everything or did you have something?
No, no, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did just want to clarify that the, the, the grant for the basketball courts that, that we were just referring to is not up for approval on this specific agenda, just so board members are aware of what they are voting on for tonight. That was, that was So that is that. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Mello.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Celia.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Wood.
Yes, but I'm gonna abstain from 11.20, 21 and 22.
Thank you. And Mrs. Kaden.
Yes. Moving on to section 12, the Curriculum Committee Agenda to be presented by Ms. Severino.
Hello. So this evening, like, I'm, we need approval for items 12.01 to 12.08. The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs and the school calendar. So the first item, 12.02 is elementary school field trips. There are two listed, two topics listed on there. The first is track and field day for district fourth and fifth graders. That is June 4th. And then also fifth grade promotions. There are no middle school or high school field trips. 12.05 is an added district home instruction placement. 12.06 is the summer adventure camp and those are being funded using SRFunds and they are, the goal of those is to re-acclimate, re-acclimate students to school setting. And 12.07 is Camp Sunnyside. And that is provided as an alternative for ESY. And 12.08 is the membership for the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association. And those are the items that we have for this evening.
Thank you. So we are looking for a motion to approve items 12.01 to 12.08 this evening.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Bill. I got another question on Camp Sunnyside. Are we providing transportation for that?
I did reach out to the child study team. If, if it's in their IP and if the parents request it, we would be responsible because they are special ed children, but I'm not sure if anyone has requested it yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call please.
Need to mute myself. Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Mello.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera.
Sorry, yes.
That's no problem. Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Celia.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mrs. Wood.
Yes, except for the items marked with asterisks where I abstain.
And Mrs. Kaden.
Yes.
Thanks.
Moving on to section 13, our Personnel Committee Agenda to be presented by Ms. Celia.
Good evening, everyone. The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment. Considers co-curricular employment and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. This evening's list is very long, so please bear with me. Items 13.02 through 13.05 are employee, are teacher and staff resignations. Items 13.06 through 13.12 are contracts for teachers and staff. 13.13 through 13.16 are four revised contracts for teachers and staff. 13.17 is additional compensation for Mr. Gersick. Who took on a different role during this school year. 13.18 Acting Assistant Superintendent Curriculum and Instruction Contract Approval. Instructional assistants are founded, the agenda items 13.19 through 13.23. Various different instructional assistants, full and part-time. 13.24 is a listing of the 2021 and 2022 building service employees. The appointment of elementary lunchtime and playground assistance. Both one and two hour are founded 13.25 and 13.26. 13.27 is the roster of unaligned staff for the next school year. 13.28 and 13.29 are the elementary and middle school permanent substitutes respectively for the next school year. 13.30 is a move to allow 10-month secretaries to work over the summer. 13.31 is the roster of, or I'm sorry, the appointment of a high school permanent substitute for the next school year. 20.32, 13, I'm sorry, 13.32 is the appointment of social work interns for 2021 to 2022. 13.33 and 13.34 are teaching and practicum placements for student teachers next year. 13.35 is a listing of the high school summer guidance counselors. And 13.36 is the middle school guidance counselors for this coming summer. We have a next, the next few, 13.37 through 13.39 are for the high school, middle school and elementary schools, non-athletic EDP stipends respectively. 13.40 is for the Saturday, Sunday, I'm sorry, Saturday, school detention monitors for the next school year. 13.41, athletic stipends, the head coaches for the various organizations. I'm sorry, not organizations, sports. 13.43, Title I Sharp After School Program Appointments. And 13.43 is extended day programs for Title I. 44 is Title I Supplemental Programs. 13.45 is a listing of the 2021 Summer Program Staff in Collingswood. Followed by 13.46, which is Oakland Summer Program Staff. 13.47, the, the summer Oakland Summer Rising Program Staff. 13.48 is the 2021 Oakland Summer CST Services. In Oakland, like I said, 49, Summer ELL Placement Testing Appointments for two people to assist with that. 13.50 through point, 13.52 are various summer academy staff members in the district. 13.53 is approval of staff to conduct preschool through grade five IEP meetings during the summer. And the next one of 54 is for grades six through eight summer staff IEP meetings. And the high school follows at 13.55. At 13.56 through, and the next one of 57 are both the summer child study team evaluations at 56 and the Oakland Shared Services Child Study Team Evaluations at 13.57. Child study, the 2021-22 Child Study Team Stipends is founded 13.58. The next two, 59 and 60 are for June and July AED Training Listings. 13.61 is approving the recommendations for substitute tutors. Substitutes and tutors, I'm sorry. 2021 are, is a listing of the 2021 Summer Buildings and Grounds Workers. And 13.63 are the several, approval of several trainings for our staff. No one's really traveling much these days, but there's trainings being done virtually. And finally, 13.64 is approval of items 13.601 through 13.63.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Can I get a motion for items 13.01 to 13.63?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Can I just ask a quick question? It's Heidi Wood.
Sure.
I see that you're voting on stuff for Oakland and I know, is it because you have shared services?
Yeah, what it is, it's Collingswood staff that are going to be going into Oakland to help with some of their summer programming. Because they're Collingswood staff, I need them approved for payroll purposes on the board agenda. So yeah, they're going, yeah, they're, they're either going into Oakland to help with their summer programming or helping with the Oakland CSTs and the IEPs. So this way their board approve for the activity.
Okay, I just was curious.
Yeah, no, that's why. That was a good question.
Oh, Bethan, I just noticed that 13.65 is for 2021 school security staff. Should we vote on that as well? The next item, 13.65.
Hey, I don't know why it's down below. Yeah, let me.
So make sure we do that the right way.
Yeah, I moved it up. I'll just change this number. Did you see, could you guys see it on my screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we're voting, we're voting on items 13.01 to 13.64.
So now I have a question before we vote.
Sure.
Security positions are the continuation of what was already in place for the, this past year. Is that true? This is not a change or addition to security staff?
Correct. It's exactly the same.
Just a nitpicking note here. 13 point, the motion was for through 13.6. I forget what the motion was, point 63?
I was gonna redo it, Bill, to, to make sure the numbers
You'll have to revise the motion in a second, I think, to
That's what she's gonna do.
Yep. So can I get a, a motion to approve items 13.01 to 13.63, please? 64.
64.
13.01 to 13.64.
I'm moved.
And a second.
I can second.
Got it.
Any other additional questions or comments from board members? Roll call please.
Okay, Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Mello.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera.
I keep doing this, yes.
Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Celia.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk and item 13.17 where I abstain.
Okay, Mrs. Wood.
Yes, except for the items marked with any asterisks where I abstain.
And Mrs. Kaden.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to section 14, Ms. Laney, Dr. McDowell, can you take us through that one?
So, yes, there, point 01, there is no hip report for this month. And point 02 are revisions and clarifications to existing job descriptions that fit within the new proposed administrative reorganization. Including the new role for Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. And then the Supervisor of Instruction for Grants, Professional Development and Special Projects. Those are the two totally new, but all of the others are slight revisions to existing roles that currently exist within the district. And they were reviewed with the Personnel Committee last week.
And then 14.03 is just the appointments to the Affirmative Action Team for the school year of 2021-2022. So can, we need an approval for items 14.01 to 14.03 this evening.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members? Roll call please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Mello.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Celia.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Wood.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaden.
Yes. We now are at section 15, our second opportunity for public comments. If you wish to make a statement, please type your name and address into the chat when your name is called. Unmute yourself to speak and please keep your comments to five minutes. Unmute yourself to speak and please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Uh, this section is for items on or off the agenda. Um, the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should go for appropriate staff members first. Um, and the intent of public comment is to give the community opportunity to provide feedback, so we will be actively listening. Um, and then we will have other opportunities for more of a back and forth conversation at a later date. So if anyone has, um, a comment that they would like to make, please put their name in the chat.
I have a question. I can't wait to see if others speak first from the community, but I did have a question.
So no one in the community, um, has, has typed their name and. So. I would say, go ahead, Syria.
Okay, uh, this is relevant regarding the, um, I believe they were called, uh, open houses or focus groups, maybe not a focus groups. But discussion hour, um, at each school location in August regarding reopening. Um, I may have missed this, but are board members also going to be present during those discussions or is it just school admin?
Uh, board members would, uh, would be welcome, um, to participate. Um, but there would, you wouldn't have an official role. Uh, generally, who will be facilitating those discussions would be, um, district staff, school staff, as in, uh, which includes some of our nurses.
Gotcha.
Generally, the nurse and the principal would co-facilitate discussions relating to, um, health and safety. And then a district administrator and a, and a school administrator would be co-facilitating, uh, discussions around the teaching and learning.
Yeah, I mean, even if we don't have an official role, and I certainly don't need one, um, in that, in that particular regard, I think it'd be a good idea. To have the perspective of those conversations on the ground level, um, for future questions that might come up in board meetings. Um, or just to understand how the messaging is being delivered. So I'm happy to attend one of the sessions when that time comes.
Yes, Syria, I was gonna say, I was gonna strongly, um, recommend that, uh, we have board representation at every one of those meetings that we are there just to hear what, um, what's going on in the community. And so I will set up similar to, to what we do for the, um, the fifth grade promotions and other, um, end of year ceremonies. We'll do some sort of a sign-up to make sure there's, there's representation at each of those, um, school forums, uh, in August.
Sounds good.
As a, as an additional note, um, Syria, we plan on, uh, they will be in person, um, but we will also have a, a virtual option, um, for family members that are not able to physically be present. To make sure that we don't, um, miss individuals who want to engage in, in the discussion.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I can just, just two things. Number one, uh, I abstained on the motion to approve the minutes. I, I know Beth Ann didn't get that. Uh, so if you just, just, uh, bring that speed. And the second thing, uh, for Dr. McDowell, do we need to approve the, uh, proclamation that you read at the beginning of the meeting on the teachers?
Um, that would be a Beth Ann, um. Conversation. Beth Ann, can you answer that?
Let me go up. Let me look at that. Let me look at it.
Sorry, Bill, could you ask the question for, for me one more time? What were, what were you asking about that? If we were.
If we need to approve that proclamation.
Yeah, it says adopted and we didn't make, take action. So if the word adopted is in it, we can, um, yeah, you can do it all in favor though, if you'd like.
Okay, so, um.
That's item, yeah, back, item four.
Right, backing up to, to item four, the, um, the proclamation, uh, declaring all Collingswood Public School Teachers and Staff, uh, Teachers of the Year. Um, who, do we have, uh? Do we do the motion as well? Motion?
Just ask, just ask all, all in favor.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, I think.
Thank you.
A motion to say that all of our teachers are Teachers of the Year is a wonderful way to end, um, since I don't see any other, um, community members having put their name in the chat for any kind of public comment. So, uh, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good evening.